Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who are assigned in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore Speaker should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. These are all on non-agenda items, it appears. The first is Mrs. Robyn Tang-Mackled wishing to speak about the state budget and school funding, the impact to the schools. Sorry, I slipped up there.
Yeah.
We think we would get it right now.
Well, I forgive Jim because, to be honest, Tanglin is my maiden name and Tanglin and Thorpe are right next to each other. We had lockers next to each other.
And we sat together for high school.
Well, that's a natural slip.
So that's how he knows me. So anyways, I just wanted to come tonight to talk a little bit about, you know, sort of to build on what Dr. Maleko was talking about in the beginning of the meeting, about some of the funding issues that we're facing from the state and the uncertainty with our budget. I might not always agree with the decisions and priorities of the Board and the administration, but I agree that they are always trying to do everything that they can with what they have to work with. And I commend our principals, the two principals that I have exposure with. I have children at Duval and I have a daughter at OL Smith. They're amazing principals and teachers as well. But tonight, I wanted to talk about some of the issues facing my daughter's middle school, OL Smith, because of lower district enrollment and the uncertainty in state funding. It's impacting my daughter's education in the following ways. It's no secret that OL Smith had some turbulent years. Scores are finally starting to approach the, are finally approaching state average after being the lowest in the district for a while. I credit that to a great principal, great staff. We're rebuilding the PTSA there, we're trying to rebuild the community, and now we're finding our resources being cut. So, all but one other middle school in the district have a 50% instructional coach for both ELA and math. We are now in the position where we have a 25% coach for each. So these coaches literally go in and coach teachers to improve their instruction. They rotate cycles, they work with several teachers, they individualize the coaching. And we have a very needy population at OL Smith. We need so much more, even though we might have lower enrollment than some other schools, we are needier. We also lost a full-time teacher and a special ed teacher, which we were forced to cut all ELA and math intervention classes, along with other programs, such as orchestra was initially cut. And luckily, it has been reinstated. But cutting the orchestra at OL Smith would almost ensure that you wouldn't have an orchestra at Edso Ford. So that's a big deal for some students. It's an important extracurricular activity, and so things like that we're facing cuts. Class sizes are larger, we have up to 36 students in some classes. We are down to bare bones. We had two full-time social workers, but now we have to share one. So in addition to three center-based special ed programs, we have very high needs just in our general population. We have students with many serious issues, such as deceased parents or loved ones, other trauma, parents dealing with addiction, and honestly, students attempting and speaking about self-harm. So we need those social workers. It's a big deal to our population. Our students deserve support. We want and deserve the chance to be a blue ribbon school despite the challenges that we face. But we need supports in place for our students. So our PTA, what are we trying to do about it besides coming here and talking to you? Our PTA is rallying our parents and students to advocate. So we have chosen to direct our efforts towards the Appropriations Committee Chair, Representative Hernandez, because we all know that Representative Hamood is pretty friendly towards our funding. Yeah, exactly. So we started at Duval, postcards for policy, where the children received like a stamped postcard that they could write a message asking for appropriate and adequate funding to support their education, to send to Representative Hernandez, and then decorate the front with our school mascot. We've also reached out to other schools' PTAs with help from our district president, PTA President Nofila Haydar. So thank you to her for that, to help join us in this advocacy. And we ask any other district PTAs to join us in our advocacy, to ask the state to provide us with appropriate and adequate funding to create the public education that our students deserve. And we ask our Board and Administration to look at our needs and try to help our school, whatever the results of the budget may be. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
President, can I?
Yes, Trustee Mosip.
Ms. Mackled, I want to assure you that we're, myself at least, are approaching other school members and other districts in the state and asking them to reach out to legislatures in both the House and the Senate. So I was just in Lansing this Friday for a workshop by the Michigan Association of School Boards, and I met some school board members from those districts that Representative Hernandez and Senator Sherky represent. And I urged them and begged them to reach out to them and ask for them to approve the Governor's Budget and the 3% increase that we would get as far as school districts. And they were very receptive, and they promised that they would reach out to their representative. I think it would carry more weight for them than we would to reach out to Representative Hernandez. So he would have to hear it from his constituents. Now, it doesn't mean that he can hear it from us as well, but I think it will carry a lot more weight if he would to hear it from his, from the school board members in his district. So I applaud you for this activism, and this is exactly what we're asking parents to do. And I hope that my colleagues also will help me reach out to other school board members that they know, that they could reach out to their legislatures, because as we heard that the Governor and the legislature are going to go forward with a budget without approving the roads. So we don't even know what we're getting as of right now until the end of September. So, once again, thank you.
Just a comment out. Thank you for the comments, Trustee Mosip. And Ms. Mackled, I appreciate, we've had some dialogue going, and in fact, she was invited when the Governor was going to come, she was going to be with us. So, in fact, at some point, maybe it'd be interesting to go with you to Lansing, you know, when I go. So anyway, we appreciate you and parents getting involved and, you know, that advocacy, I think that's critical. So thank you, we're all in it for the students. And I just want to remind the public that there was, and I've said it here before, Michigan, there was an in-depth study done, and it showed that Michigan rated 50th out of 50 states in funding growth over a 15-year period. So, you know, there's other studies through Finance Collaborative that have clearly shown that public education in Michigan is not funded at an appropriate level. It's broken and it needs to be fixed, so.
And there was a survey taken of residents in Michigan, and 70% said that we weren't funding enough. So it's clear that the population at large believes that funding needs to improve. It's just not being weighted well in Lansing. Unfortunately, their priorities are a little bit different.
All right.
Next is Cheyenne Brown wishing to speak about the Michael Berry Career Center bus overcrowding.
I have a packet, like a couple of things that I'd like to share with you. Could I pass them out?
Sure.
Whoever can take one, whoever wants to, can help.
Okay, you can, because we're on live TV.
Okay, all right, sorry. Within this packet is my statement that I'm about to read, a screen, a print of the NHTSA's off their website, and then a picture that I took on the Michael Berry bus. But within that, okay. So hello, I am Cheyenne Brown. I'm an 11th grader at Fortson, and I also attend Michael Berry in the AM, which I personally take advantage of the transportation to the center that the school system provides for us. On Wednesday, the 28th of August, I attended my second day of class at Michael Berry. The buses had been overcrowded the day before and the morning, but the trip back to Fortson was especially crowded. When I got on the bus at 10:20, when the bus is supposed to be loaded, it was already full. Yet the kids who needed seats just kept coming into the bus, like just kept coming. I was forced to ask a girl who I'd never seen or spoken to in my life to sit on my lap because there was not an open seat that, there was not an open seat that wasn't occupied by more than, less than two students, like there was two students on every seat. To my surprise, there were already two girls in that seat, one on top of the other. I have photo evidence and video evidence of teens sitting in the aisle because there was no more room that could be made on the seats. That's the last page in this. I made a public Facebook post on my personal Facebook and tagged DPS and asked if this is what they consider putting students first. That post has been shared almost 20 times and has over 5,000 views. By September 5th, the bus situation had made no positive progress. I was pulled out of my fifth hour class and told that this statement does have names of members.
What you can't.
So I know, I'm so, I was contacted by a board member or administrator and said that they wanted to meet with me around, at 2:30 at her office in hopes of resolving the issue. I skipped my swim practice and I went to the meeting. Unfortunately, I was met with extreme disappointment, very disappointed with how it turned out. This member had contacted the Director of Transportation, and they both told me during the meeting that three high school students to a bus seat was safer than driving in a car. This administrator said that spending $90,000 on a new teacher to shrink a few class sizes was almost more important than maintaining a fourth bus for Fortson High School. These two people both said that they have a three-week grace period to break the law, knowingly overcrowding the buses and they, before they can get another bus to FHS. These fully grown teens are sitting in the aisle with half, if they're not sitting in the aisle, they have half their body on a seat. And because of this district's ignorance and inability to actually put your students first, I have friends who are seriously considering dropping out of their Michael Berry or DCMSD classes because they feel unsafe riding these buses. And even if I do or don't receive a response from the Board today, I will continue to tell my friends, family, and schoolmates about this issue until A, Fortson gets another bus, or B, DPS reduces the students enrolled in Michael Berry and DCMSD. Furthermore, I would like to invite any board member or member of Dearborn Public School administrations to put themselves on a Michael Berry bus in our shoes and ride those buses and put three fully grown adults to one seat. I hope you consider my stance. This, your second page has an excerpt from the third page, just on a smaller sheet. The NHTSA says that generally they fit three smaller elementary school students or two adult high school students to a typical 39-inch bus seat. The NHTSA has made this public statement saying that persons not sitting or sitting partially outside of the school bus seats will not be afforded to the occupant protection provided by the school bus seats. So basically, that means that the crash protection that you have sitting fully on the seat is basically void if you're half in the aisle. So you're overcrowding these buses, putting three kids on a seat, and you're putting kids in danger. So I just wanted to let you know what's going on and how we students, I have a lot of students that I'm friends with that are very scared and very upset with the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Maleko.
Sure, yeah, just appreciate you, you know, bringing this forward. And I know we had Mr. Andrews that spoke earlier about the data. So we'll continue to look into, I think he talked about, you know, balancing the buses between. I also know, and Mr. Andrews, maybe you can, that we would never allow, we don't allow ever, over 78 students on a bus, correct? So I know for us, safety is of the utmost importance, and again, just, you know, we appreciate your position, and we'll continue to work forward and improve it for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, please. Oh, one more card? Okay, sorry.
Next card is from Mr. Russ Cavalluna wishing to give kudos to a teacher.
No naming names, please.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Russ Cavalluna. I stand before you as a citizen of Dearborn with children in the school district. I happen to watch many of your convenings here at the Board, and I noticed that this is an appropriate place for people in our community to bring grievances and concerns with the school district, and I think that's completely appropriate. However, I also notice a lack of times when citizens are complimenting the good works that are happening in the Dearborn Public Schools. And I happened to witness one of those very things the last couple, two weeks ago that I wanted to bring to your attention. I, of course, understand and honor the President's admonition about naming names, so I'll just say, I know a young person who was just moving from kindergarten to first grade, and that person was rather apprehensive about that. In fact, he was trying to convince his father that he should be able to stay in kindergarten. And his father was trying to convince him that first grade might be a better option for him. But the reason I want to bring this to your attention is that this young man decided that he wanted to reach out and talk to his kindergarten teacher, who, without giving any personal identifying information, this person has taught in this district for, I believe, over four decades. And of course, a person like that would know to call the kindergarten teacher, which this young person asked his father to call the kindergarten teacher in the bedtime timeframe of the day before the first day of school. And this teacher spent over 15 minutes calming this student, telling this student that things would be okay, and making the student feel like we would want any of our children to feel, and that is that the school is a place of family, is a place of warmth, and that it is a place where risks and things that are not quite comfortable can be taken on. I know that we have problems in our district. I think that any public education system will have those things. I know that this Board does its best to address those things, and I do think you're entitled to hear every once in a while when people do things right in the district. And so as a citizen who looks to you for leadership, I wanted you to know that that happens on occasion, and I frankly think it happens a lot here. Thank you.
And Mr. Cavalluna, may I suggest, because we don't allow names to be mentioned here, that if you send us an email and/or a letter, we will put that with the teacher's name on it. We will be more than happy to share it amongst ourselves and put it in the teacher's file.
Well, I'm sure, I can tell you, part of that's already happened, Madam President, because the teacher's file will have something on that already from me. But I do believe the Board knows it, and so I will follow your direction on that.
And I believe we all know who the teacher is as well.
And how's that student doing with first grade?
That's part of confidentiality still, Mr. Thorpe. I think he'll survive.
Well, he's got great parents.
That's debatable.
Thank you so much. Oh, Trustee Barry?
Oh, no, I don't.
Oh, okay. No, he doesn't want to. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment that the student we heard from, I don't want her to think that it's because there was no questions or comments that we didn't hear you. We were listening and we heard you. We are very, very thankful when students come up here and address us, either at the meeting, or emails, or maybe a public event, so I just wanted to make sure that happened. The reason we are here is for our students.
And since it happens.
Without a doubt, I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues, so thank you very much.
And since it happens so rarely that a student takes the time out of their evening to come, we really do appreciate the appearance here.
And it was well-prepared.
Yes, very well-prepared.
Trustee Lane, did you have?
Oh, I was just going to say, Mr. Cavalluna's comments are appreciated, but I like to say that every day miracles happen in public schools. The type of incident that he talks about is, I mean, we're replete with stories like that, and that's what makes public education great. And it's nothing short of miraculous that 3,000 staff come and almost 22,000 kids, and every day we push forward. It's just, that's why we're here. That's what made America, it's miraculous.
And challenges build character.
Yeah, yeah.
All right then, we're all done with blue cards, correct? All right, next item, please.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which Board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we'll exclude these from the motion below. I would assume number 14.
14 has to be polled for names, yes, which is basically all of us.
Right.
For the filling. Okay, so 14 is polled. Is there any other item anybody would like polled? Hearing none, can we make the motion?
Move that action items numbered 1 through 15 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of number 14.
Support.
So moved.
No, we had to move second.
Oh, did you have, I'm sorry.
At all.
Moved, so moved. So, support.
Support, yeah.
All right. All right, are there, yes, Trustee Barry?
I didn't want to have polled, but number two, obviously, here we go again, there's only one bidder. I can understand with this, with this item, what happened, but I just wanted to, Tom, do you know why we only had one bidder? I mean, I should be asking Dr. Maleko.
Yeah, no, we can, yeah.
No, we're in our fourth year of a six-year program, and with the standardization, we are trying to be a little more specific in the type of pianos that we're having for the district, district-wide, in case teachers change and students go program a program. So that's why with the particular brand we have, we also say all are alternates, but everybody knows after four years of buying the same piano that the alternates aren't really forthcoming because of our standardization.
That was my follow-up question. This is fair price.
Yeah, we got two more years. This is a six-year program.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, thank you.
All right then, hearing no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, could you please attach a unanimous roll?
Yeah, I'm getting to number 14.
Summary, you read the summary first.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one is the approval of warrants. Number two is the approval of a contract to Steinway Piano Gallery. Number three, approval of a contract to Delta Network Services. Number four, approval of a contract extension with Johnson Controls. Number five, approval of a contract extension with Tennupal Security. Number six, approval of change orders. Number seven, approval of a contract to Angel Tracks Mobile Video Surveillance Solutions. Number nine, approval of a contract to Holland Bus Company. Numbers nine through 12, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 13, approval of financial statement, and number 15, approval of donations.
All right then, now back to 14.
All right. Designation of Board of Representative Voting Delegates to the MASB Delegates Assembly, which is Board Report 19-33. The MASB 2019 Delegate Assembly will begin Friday, November 8th, at 5:30 at the Grand Travers Resort in Acme. Delegates selected by Boards of Education across the state will decide MASP's positions on a wide variety of issues affecting education, including our position on proposed legislation and issues being considered by the State Board of Education. Legislation is supported or opposed based on resolutions adopted by our Delegate Assembly. Recommended action, the move that the Board of Education select the following four voting delegates and three alternates to represent the Board of Education at the MASP Delegate Assembly to be held Friday, November 8th, 5:30 at the Grand Travers Resort in Acme.
Which is basically all of us. Get to stick our names in here. If there's anybody who potentially believes that they may be going, they would be the ones to be the four voting delegates. Yes, Trustee Thorpe.
Well, I was going to make the motion, right? Because we can make, we still have to make the motion before we select the names.
We have to insert the names, yeah.
I can be available, is, I didn't see anything on here, though, that said, is it just for Friday, or is it Friday?
Begins Friday.
Yeah.
The entire conference, though, right?
Yeah, I thought this was part of the conference.
Usually it is.
Because I think we've received something for that whole weekend.
Yeah.
All right. I am available that weekend.
Okay, so Trustee Thorpe will be delegate number one.
And do we need four?
No.
No.
No, we, but they want, if all four show up, then that would be, but if only one shows up, then that's the person who would be voting on our behalf.
But they only get one vote.
But, yeah, you would all have to have a consensus of how you were going to vote if there was, because it's the district, the Board.
We would vote as a district, not as an individual.
Right, right, not as an individual. Trustee Mosip, were you raising your hand?
Yes, I'm available as well.
Okay, is there, that's two.
Perhaps I will. I don't think I will be attending.
Okay, yeah, Trustee McDonald, okay. Trustee Barry.
I have.
Okay, then the.
The rest are alternates.
Are alternates. Trustee Lane, Trustee Mead, and Trustee Petlicoff.
I have been to one of these delegate assemblies before. It's a very interesting process, and it's very in-depth on Robert's rules and things like that, so with a large, large group.
Right.
So it's interesting, and you'll get something out of it.
It's a lot of policy, it's a lot of, yeah, formality. All right then.
So is that a motion?
Do we have a motion?
So moved, support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous roll will be attached. All right then, next item, please. Oh, yes, wait, we are going to, we, in our votes that we've just taken, we did approve some new hires, and Dr. Maleko would like to introduce some of them.
So we have three here, and they were approved in the normal HR as supervisors under number 10, action item number 10. And so I'm going to ask them to come up, I'll call their names. We have Matt Osinski, Gary Shelby, and Michael Belcher. If I can ask the three of them to come up, and we'll have them maybe make a couple comments. Matt Osinski's Ground Trades and Labor, Gary Shelby Plan Operations Manager, and Michael Belcher Construction and Contracts. They were approved through a restructuring of the Operations Department under Mr. Wall. Also, so the public knows that it was actually a cost savings with more efficiency, so that helps our budget as well. So if we can show the appreciation and congratulate them.
And as you step up to the microphone, you do have to introduce yourselves again for us.
Hi, my name's Matt Osinski. I'm currently the Carpenter Leader and soon to be the Grounds Trades Supervisor. I'd just like to thank the trustees for giving them the opportunity to hopefully better the district, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Belcher, just been approved for the Construction and Contract Administrator. So I'd like to thank you guys. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to trying to better the students of Dearborn Public Schools.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Gary Shelby. I've met many of you guys at school events before. I got 38 years in the district, 32 as an engineer, and I'd like to thank you all and thank the interview committee for making me their choice and looking forward to the challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. And challenges there will be, gentlemen. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
And we're excited to have them. I can also say that part of that cost savings was we reduced some contracts in order to bring in our own employees, so that's another.
Instead of outsourcing, basically, yes.
Yeah, so thanks to Mr. Wall and his team.
And we always like to see that. All right, next item, please.
Discussion items. Policy update, policy 0166.
So the only change, there was a lot of discussion at the last P-12 meeting and also the last College Board meeting about the Agenda Zero Policy of the Bylaws, 0166, which regard, it was just regarding requests for information. And then there was additional conversation about it today as well, so I was listening very closely. So the only change that we were going to discuss today is just the one word, changing a word in their staff to designate or designate. I will, you know, with the Policy Committee, wait to see whether or not it will be in a voting item for next month for the ad hoc committee, because I don't know if we need to change the policy language, or just if the policy language covers adding the addition of ad hoc committee. So we can decide that, and then we could either vote, you could either vote on it next month.
It is already included under the President's responsibilities.
Okay.
To, that I, that the President, not me, whoever's sitting at the presidency, can form an ad hoc committee. So that's already there.
Excellent.
I think our conversation will be, do we need guidelines to be added to that somewhere?
Okay.
But other than that.
Then it'll be on the agenda for voting next month.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Board of Education Business, first acknowledgement of correspondence.
Did we do summary?
Yeah. Anybody have any, I, I did, I have at the table here a thank you note from the, um, what do we call it, the teachers, uh.
Oh, yeah, from, uh.
From the, the orient, the professional staff orientation, uh, that, from Dearborn Teacher University, um, yeah. For, um, their, what, three-day orientation that they had at the, yeah, at the beginning of the, so, I have that thank you note, it was very nice, any, I don't know of anybody else, yes?
I did receive an email, I read and I'll forward it to you and Dr. Maleko, apparent, I believe, Miss Smith Middle School area, subject came up, I mean, it always comes up with a couple of years, about students walking from that area.
Oh, across.
Or even from the other side of Telegraph.
Telegraph, yeah.
Walking to Atcel Ford High School, uh, there's some, she's claiming some things, I'll, I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, just so that everybody can, um, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, next item.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
The policy committee, the policy committee met, um, before this meeting tonight, and we discussed staff reductions, um, policy revisions, specifically the rights for recall section, attendance verification process, like, section, and, uh, the domain for professionalism of teacher evaluation rubic, which encompasses significant building contributions, so that was all discussed. We also discussed a bylaw agenda policy, um, zero-one-six-six, which addressed the boards' requests for information, again, which was discussed at the last P-12 meeting, in the college meeting, and as, uh, Ms. Ali Bazey said, the only change was the superintendent designate. The committee also had a really good discussion on the board bylaws regarding filling a board position, a board vacancy position, uh, M A S B recommended guidelines were reviewed, and the committee brainstormed ideas, um, for fair and transparent process, and, uh, once a draft is available, we'll share that with the entire board of our recommendations, but we had a really good discussion, and there was a lot of things that were brought forward, and a lot of great ideas. So I wanted to thank the committee for that discussion and, and, uh, working on this issue.
Yes, yes, good, sounds like you had a productive evening.
We did, we really did.
Yes.
The Education Foundation, the Dearborn Education Foundation had its kickoff meeting for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, three weeks ago, I think it was, uh, where they went through their planning, and they've got their first fundraiser for this year coming up in just under two weeks, I believe it's the twenty-second, uh, it's their Ford Dearborn Golf Outing, they've already sold most of their whole sponsorships, in fact, I think they sold all of those, there's still some other sponsorships available, and I think they're still looking for a couple of golfers, but they're pretty much sold out, so it's exciting for them.
Well, we hope the weather, everybody have fingers crossed, and toes. All right then, uh, any other committee reports? All right, uh, next item, please.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Just, just one more announcement, on the twenty-sixth of, uh, September, we have the Smoke on the Grill that supports the Goodfellows and the PTA, at four-thirty, I believe it starts at, or four o'clock, at Ford Field, so that's always a well-attended event, and.
At the big shelter, yes.
Yeah, so, and the PTA takes the lead on sales administrators as well, and we partner with the Goodfellows, it's a great event, I know you always volunteer there, Roxanne.
Collecting donations, too, for, uh, the raffle, so if anybody, any business, anything is interested in, uh, providing a donated raffle item, contact me or the district, so we can, uh, once again, have a lot of good things to, to raffle off, to raise money for our PTA groups.
Trustee Thorpe.
If anyone had seen in the last week, Michigan's becoming the first state to ban flavored e-cigarettes, I'm very happy to see this happening, knowing that there is problems in several buildings where students are, uh, smoking, uh, it's tougher for it to be caught, uh, doesn't leave the traces that normal cigarettes do, but I'm glad that, that, uh, some things the legislators are, are kinda getting right, so I'm glad they're moving forward with that one.
Trustee Lane.
Yeah, I, um, wanted to, uh, let everybody be aware also of, uh, the climate strike that's coming up, um, September twentieth, it's organized by the Sunrise Movement, um, I'll be out of town then, so I can't attend this one, but, uh, I looked up where it was going to be, uh, so there, world, this is a worldwide climate strike, and it's, uh, it's trying to get people interested in talking about human-induced climate change, so I looked up different places, and of course, uh, Ann Arbor has one organized, um, and then the other place that had one organized was not Michigan State, it was not Wayne State, but it was Henry Ford College, so I was very proud to see that, I emailed the professor who's organized it, he has some suggestions that he sent to Vice President Setkowski, and, uh, I'm not encouraging any of our students to go out on strike, I'm not taking a stand on that, but I would encourage other people to, uh, make themselves more knowledgeable about it, so, there is a flyer that the college, uh, is putting out, and, uh, they have, will have a lot of really nice events, like a ceremonial tree planting, so it's, it's an important thing, and I would ask people to become involved if they're able, September twentieth.
Trustee Mosip.
Yep, um, one thing that I'd like to mention, and, um, obviously, Atcel Ford was on the news, and unfortunately, one of our students attempted to commit suicide, and that's, that was very, uh, unfortunate and very saddening, and I know the building administration has been on top of this, and, uh, I applaud the students who have been supporting each other, um, uh, with this unfortunate incident, I know, uh, that the school has been also following up with the student's family, so I, although, I, I'm on social media as well, and I saw some comments that were very unfortunate by some students, and I hope not to see. Suicide is, or thinking of suicide is something very serious, uh, and it should not be something that is funny, or that's something that you can make fun of, so for those students, I hope that they would review their consciousness, and that they would talk to, uh, the school counselor about this, um, if they have, or the social worker at the school, if they have any comments, or how would they, uh, go on, uh, with their school life after this incident, so, um, I know it was very unfortunate, but I, I hope that we would think about if this, to wit to happen to somebody that we would love, how would we react, so, I applaud the students who are out there supporting each other, and also sending prayers and thoughts to, uh, the family and the student who is in question. Moving on, and to what trustee Thorpe mentioned about the, the vapes and the e-cigarettes being banned, I, I believe that's a great step, um, I'd like to add that the, uh, drug crisis, I mean, we lost five members of our community just in the past two months, and this is, obviously, everybody's saying it's a nationwide problem, and that we do see this in every community, and I ask all of the students, if you know any students who are unfortunately addicted, there is help, just seek help. It's, a, a life of a student is, is too terrible to lose, so, if you know anybody who is, um, addicted, please reach out, reach out to my, even to myself, and I can help out, or, uh, the school administration. One, and I light on now, I, I'd like to congratulate, uh, my friend and a school employee, Kimberly Asmael, for receiving the Governor's, uh, Service Award, um, and this award is given annually to four, uh, members and, or to four residents of Michigan, so, uh, Kimberly was one of the recipients, and I'd like to congratulate her, I know she does a lot in our community, helping the unfortunate ones, and.
She's a school district employee.
She is, yes, uh, with the adult education, so, congratulations, Kimberly, this award is well-deserved, and, uh, we are very proud of you. One last thing that I wanna comment, and I'm done, is about the busing, I hope that we really wanna find a solution for this, um, and, uh, whether it's we're dividing students evenly, or even seeking other ways, or thinking outside the box of how can we transport students safely, uh, to their destination, from and to their destination, so, uh, that's for, for me, and thank you so much for listening.
Okay, anybody else have anything they would like to share?
Just real quick, um, I visited a couple stu, or schools on the first day of school, and just the excitement in the air was, you know, you could feel it, the parents, the students, all the fresh haircuts and the, the sharp clothes, and it's an exciting time in our, in our district, so I wish everyone a, a wonderful school year, teachers, students, parents, everyone.
I think we all share that sentiment. All right then, next item, please.
Request for Information and Future Agenda Items.
Oh, trustee Lane, I, raise your hand higher.
Uh, Dr. Maleko, uh, we had a really, um, voluminous board briefs the, the last week, uh, and I was just wondering whether some of those might be cleared out a little bit, cause we've got quite a bit of history in each of them with the link, so, I just wanted to encourage you to, uh, weed them down a little bit.
Okay, sure.
Uh, you know, reading through, I mean, there's like link after link in there, and I think I've got a whole year's history of this incident, that incident, so, I know that some of it are still ongoing, but.
Okay. In all the different sections, or?
Well, pardon, no, it would, it's not a request for specific information.
No, no, I'm saying it's an agenda item that we're on, I missed it, so.
Yes, yeah, yes, that's where, that's where we're at.
We'll review it, then.
Is there anybody, okay, trustee Mosip.
And this is, I'd, I'd like to throw this to all of my colleagues, and to see if, if we have a consensus, um, I mean, with the shortage of stu, of teachers, um, and also that we had to reduce some teachers, and we had to have some split classes, and some parents were really upset about split classes, about other cost savings that we would like to do, um, so I, I, I'm wondering if we have a master list of contractors that we employ, that we employ through contracts, they're not our employees, but they're consultants who are on contracts, if we have that kind of master list, that Mr. Wall can pull for us in less than fifteen minutes, if it's more than work, then I'd like to see of how we can get that, um, to us, because, um, I mean, just today, we had some people who are, uh, coming to be, um, employees instead of, uh, contractors, and that saves us money, I'd like to see more of that, so we, I'd like to see the information, though, first, so, can we get that, Dr. Maleko?
Yeah, and a lot of times, I guess, just to be more specific, like, the contracts go to the company, it doesn't necessarily specify the person, but you were looking for maybe people that are more fully, you know what I mean, cause sometimes you might contract a, um, you know, a speaker or something, and so.
Right, right, yeah, the, I'm saying, somebody who is fully with us through the whole year.
You mean like a physical therapist, or somebody?
Someone fully, yeah, at a certain, like, at a full-time level, yeah, okay, okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that, because I don't know, I, I'm assuming that, I don't know what kind of, uh, effort that would be to.
Is, is the idea to see about being able to bring them in-house, would it be cheaper, or to see if it's been bid out, or still being bid out, where we could find someone else that could do it cheaper?
Either, yeah, yeah.
And you're looking for instructional and non-instructional, right, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, I hope the work is not substantial to get that kind of information, so, I, I assume there might be already a list that we can just get.
We do have a list available, and it shouldn't take too long to get that information, um, I just wanted, I wanted to share, trustee, that, um, we've started those conversations with the unions, the union leadership, and also because, um, for example, the one contract that just ended, and we hired two HVAC employees, um, to do the heating and cooling, was a great cost savings, which allowed us to, uh, save money and get, um, more, uh, leadership in the areas that we needed to get more leadership, and so we're actually looking at another contract right now, so on that spreadsheet, we have dates of when those contracts expire.
Oh, great.
And so, um, Tom Wall and I, he was having those conversations with people in his department, and I was having those conversations with the union heads, um, the DFSC president and the DSOEA president, um, actually, DSOEA president wasn't there, but, um, so we are looking at that, and I think it's a fabulous idea, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention as well.
And ju, just to say, though, we don't want to do your job, and we're not going to micromanage you or, or Dr. Maleko, because we hired you to do, so I, whatever information we get, I'm, I'm not sure what you're going to do with it, but, um, because we do know that they're going to be working i, in the best interest of what the budget can support, yes, trustee Thorpe.
The one thing I wonder about is if we're talking about consultants, though they're not personnel of our district, do they get the same rights where their information is not being shared?
I would assume that what we're going to be seeing is going to be minimal in, um, information.
Most of the contracts are foible, if there are some proprietary language of how they work, or there are internal mechanisms, they might be redacted, but they're public information.
Okay.
Now, and each situation's unique, an example, if I can just say where we were purposeful for contracting, and this was just the upper management, and it's been the positive we've been hearing, and we appreciate the great work of our food service, again, we didn't eliminate any positions, but we brought in a company that has an infrastructure that we can offer through SFE that the board approved, so that was something, though, that we were purposeful, no one lost the job, but it was because we didn't have the capability to come in and do what they did, and we're going through transition, so, I sent out a, a note to our principals, just to, you know, when I've been in buildings, show appreciation to our staff that are doing great work, I think it's been a little more stressful on food service staff, but at the same token, I'm getting, uh, great, um, and we appreciate their work, at the same token, right next to that, I have parents and students, and I'm not initiating, coming up and just complimenting the, the choices, and they're very, you know, appreciative, and when we went through this process, you know, we had the union with us the whole way, you know, as part of the process when we took on, so, we still have some, uh, growth in that area, but I, I've been getting, and again, I'm not, I'm going into the buildings, other than one day, Tom and I deliberately went to look at the, the food service, but the other days, I was going in, and people were coming up to me, parents, teachers, staff, administrators, and they were just thrilled with the options, at the same token, we're transitioning, and we know we're a little bit short-staffed, I think, in that department, too, so I think over time, things will get better, and the CEO of the company actually called me to just go and give reinsurance, is that this is kind of a transition we go through, and you take on a district our size and convert over, but, I'm giving you the, the longer answer, and, and thankful to our employees, but at the same token, I'm kind of saying, okay, this was an area, though, that we targeted on purpose.
We did contract that on intentional.
It was done for a strategic reason, so.
Yes, trustee Barry.
There could be information that can be brought over to the Finance Committee, uh, I was, I planted the seeds with Mr. Wall's last meeting, that, uh, I was gonna be asking for information, how do we get it on the Finance Committee, uh, agenda, I was looking probably towards some of the larger vendors, and the ones that get bid out every six, seven, eight, ten years, so, but that could be information that can start there, and, uh, move, you know, have a discussion there, like you said, we're not gonna tell the district how to run their business, but.
Yep, not at all, that's not my intention, just to see if we can do some cost.
Sure, sure, no, it's, it's understandable.
Well, is trustee Mosip on the finance, I can't remember who, who's on the Finance Committee, you're not, yeah, so he would still need the, um, report, so, we'll, we'll all get the report, but yes, yeah, if you wanna, if, if, uh, Mr. Wall can find a spot on his agenda, af, maybe after October's.
We do have a meeting scheduled for October, right, we do, yeah, so.
Yeah, so, um, it, we might be able to find it, maybe it'll be a good Christmas gift. All right then, yes, that, it would, it wouldn't hurt to, um.
Sure.
Put it there first, i, in the discussion arena, I agree, all right then, anyone else have any requests? All right, next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, September sixteen, twenty nineteen, HFC Policy Committee Meeting, six P M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, September sixteen, twenty nineteen, HFC. Monday, September sixteen, twenty nineteen, H F C's meeting, seven P M. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center, Henry Ford College, in the Rosenoff Boardroom. And Monday, October fourteenth, twenty nineteen, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven P M. at the Administrative Service Center, in the Frank Franchi Boardroom.
We are adjourned, I know, I'm, she's just gonna give it to you.